The meeting of the Committee on Health is now called to order. Let us stand for the opening prayer.
Opening prayer. Almighty Father, Creator of heaven and earth, we honor your name, we thank you for the gift of life and our faithfulness in providing our daily needs. Today, as we perform our duties as public servants, we humbly ask you, dear Lord, to guard our hearts and mind and to put the interest and welfare of our fellow men above all else. Make us more sensitive to the needs of those who have blessed life and give us a listening ear to those attending today's deliberation as we search for the best course of action to face the pressing issues today. We entrust the remaining hours of the day into your hands and retro will be done. All this we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Yeah, Madam Chair. Yeah, I would like to move that we dispense with the calling of the roll, Madam Chair.
There is a motion and duly seconded. The calling of the roll is dispensed with.
Okay, Madam Chair, I must mention the minutes of the previous meeting has been distributed to the members. And I would like to move at this point that we dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting and approve the same.
Upon motion, the reading of the minutes of the previous committee meeting is dispensed with and the same is approved. Good morning, everyone. The chair would like to recognize the distinguished committee member who is present today. May I recognize and acknowledge the honorable Mark Go, our committee of higher and technical education chairman and a member of the Committee on Health. Good morning, Chair. The committee secretary is now directed to recognize our esteemed guests and our resource persons.
Good morning, Honorable Chair. Chair Go. In attendance for today's meeting are the following. From the Department of Health, Dr. Hernan Manatad. Good morning, man, and the rest of the technical staff of the Department of Health. From the Philippine Statistics Authority, Mr. Chodoro Altesa and Attorney Jefferson Biado and the rest of the technical staff. From the Department of Budget and Management, Ms. Irette McClang. Are you around, ma? And Mr. Jeff Raboa Cupino. From the Research Institute for Tropical Medicine or ITM, Attorney Analisa Duran. From the Food and Drug Administration, Attorney Emilio Polig. Morning, sir. From the Bureau of Quarantine, Dr. Carlos De La Reyna. Morning, sir. And from the Department of Interior and Local Government, Mr. Robin Lim and Ms. Kristin John Aragon.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Aragon Tomial, I'm sorry. And from the League of Cities, Ms. Reggie Santiago. Good morning, everyone. That would be all for now, Chair.
So once again, good morning. And our agenda today is a briefing of the Department of Health on the Philippines capacity for surveillance or response to notifiable diseases, epidemics, and health events of the public health concern with the end view of strengthening the Republic Act number 11332, otherwise known as the mandatory reporting of notifiable diseases and health events of the Public Health Concern Act. The Republic Act number 11332 was enacted on April 26, 2019, only two months after the enactment of the Republic Act number 11223 or the Universal Healthcare Act. Both laws are the landmark public health legislations that were immediately tested and assessed during the COVID-19 pandemic one year later. Sadly, the pandemic cost the country thousands of lives, but it also taught us valuable lessons in the healthcare delivery system, particularly in the management of infectious diseases. These are lessons we can now learn from that we would make our nation more ready and equipped in case of possible future epidemics or pandemics like COVID-19. We shall start today with a briefing of the Department of Health on the implementation of Republic Act number 11332 on the state of the country's capacity for surveillance and response to notifiable diseases, epidemics, and health events of public concern. We hope that the Department of Health can also give the committee an update on the latest viral outbreaks in the country, such as the human metanomavirus or HMPV, which already logged 284 cases by the end of 2024, and as well as the emergence of MPox or monkeypox virus. After the presentation of the Department of Health, we shall hear the views of the committee members and other stakeholders. And after, the committee shall also consider House Bill number 3863, an act amending Republic Act number 1132 to make it more effective in addressing future outbreaks. So without further ado, the chair would like to recognize a representative of the DOH. For their presentation, may we now call on Dr. Jurna Manatad, Director for of the Epidemiology Bureau. Doctor, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, everyone. I would like to present now the presentations for this meeting as requested. Next slide, please. Consistent with the Republic Act number 11332 and its revised IRR, the Department of Health through the Epidemiology Bureau is the technical authority for disease surveillance in the Philippines. All notifiable diseases and health events of public health concerns are mandatorily reported to the Epidemiology Bureau or its epidemiology and surveillance units. Next slide, please. Most reports of notifiable diseases and health events of public health concerns are captured through the Philippine Integrated Disease Surveillance and Response System of the department. Next slide, please. To protect the country against public health threats, the Philippine Integrated Disease Surveillance and Response System serves as the early warning and response to epidemics and health threats in the country. This is subdivided into capturing cases for notifiable diseases and those that capture health events of public health concern, such as diseases outbreaks and clustering of cases. Both of these systems serve as early warning systems to rapidly notify the health system for adequate response and coordination mechanisms. Next slide, please. Local surveillance systems contribute significantly to the nationwide analysis of health data. The timely and efficient flow of critical health information supports public health decisions both at the local and national levels. For case-based disease surveillance, detected cases that are identified as immediately notifiable at the disease reporting units are reported simultaneously to the province, city, region, and Epidemiology Bureau within 24 hours of detection by the fastest means as possible. Initial reports can be verbal using the telephone or cellphone or via email. This will be followed by case-based reporting form using the standard Philippine Integrated and Disease Surveillance and Response Case Investigation Form. On the other hand, weekly notifiable diseases are reported from the disease reporting units to the next higher epidemiology and surveillance units. Next slide, please. Now EB or the Epidemiology Bureau manages the following public health surveillance information systems. Reporting of non-respiratory cases such as the size of influenza-like illnesses and severe acute respiratory infection or SARS is done through this system, the Tanod Contra COVID Surveillance System. All other diseases under the case-based surveillance and captured health events such as clustering are reported through the Philippine Integrated Disease Surveillance and Response Information System. For surveillance of adverse event following immunization, the cases are reported through the Vigi Flow as managed by FDA and adverse event following information system as managed by the Epidemiology Bureau. For our specialized surveillance systems, we have our surveillance systems on HIV and other sexually transmitted infections. We also have our online surveillance systems for priority injuries. And we also have our surveillance system for tuberculosis. We also have the Field Health Service Information System for the monitoring and evaluation of public health programs. With this, Madam Chair, this is the systematic way of how the Department of Health through primarily the Epidemiology Bureau and other critical bureaus helping us boost our national health security through surveillance and outbreak response. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, can we ask some questions on the presentation?
Yes, I guess Representative Go.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I would like to know from Dr. Manatad. With your presentation, how do you evaluate the performance of your unit or DOH in terms of the effectiveness of these items that you presented in the many cases that we have during the last few years?
Yes, Dr. Jurna.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Based on the presentations and how do we also evaluate, I would like also to clarify the questions and the effectiveness of the bureau in doing the surveillance and outbreak response. We have our matrices and our guide and then indicators to evaluate how sensitive and specific and responsive this system is. So we have a criteria for that in terms of the functionality also of our surveillance system down not only at the Epidemiology Bureau, but also down to the province, to the region, province, and also to the local government unit. Now, since we classify the diseases as category 1 and cat 2, so for cat 1, these are diseases that should be notified within 24 hours. And these are the list of the cases. We have the system that could capture those diseases through our event-based and surveillance system and also through our case-based surveillance system. So the diseases that should be captured within 24 hours is an indication that, yes, the surveillance system is sensitive enough to capture those cases that should be notified within 24 hours. Now, for the diseases classified as weekly notifiable on a weekly basis, this will also tell us that, yes, we are capturing the disease based on the classification of the disease. So we have a report based on the trend and based on the diseases captured by the system, we can say that the system is sensitive enough to capture this notifiable diseases, Madam Chair.
Chair Go, did the doctor Jurna answer your query?
I think we'll have another presentation. May I give them the...
Yeah, I think...
Dr. Jurna, may I know if anyone here aside from you would be able to discuss to us that what is exactly happening within the system? Because all we received was the response of having a system just to surveillance, but the system itself, would there be an among you who can discuss that? How it happens? Like, for example, an actual disease that was modified by the system, but how is that system? Is it... How is that communication? Is it digital? Is it verbal? How many people are involved in that? Would there be any one among you, like, only the DOH can explain that?
Madam Chair, we can go back into the second the slide, the flow of capturing and how the process of doing the surveillance and who are involved in doing the surveillance. We can describe it more through the presentation.
The... Do you still have the... What page in the presentation was that, Dr. Jurna? In the meantime, may I first recognize another member of the Committee on Health? We have Honorable St. Chongbiyan Solon of the Sarangani Leng District.
I think what you presented, this theoretical process that you follow in terms of the surveillance, monitoring, and actual addressing of these particular diseases. What we'd like to know is stated by Chair, we'd like to know how do you trigger all of this? Yeah, like the monkeypox, we can have a specific case.
We can, please, Madam Chair, if I may allow, we can further describe the process on page, slide number five. Where is my case detection, case registration, case guide? Yes, Madam Chair. Okay, so this is really how the process in terms of its application in the ground and at the implementing units. Now, since surveillance really is our first line of defense, so we need really to discuss as to what's the process in the implementing units. Now, we have classified category 1 as immediately notified diseases within 24 hours and also category 2 as diseases that should be notified within 24, within a week. Now, based on the list of the diseases guided by the law and what is category 1, so example po is a case of MPAX, yes. By the moment, so we have a lot of sensors or areas or health facilities or clinics or hospitals that could capture the event or the disease. Now, if there is an MPAX now case or a patient going into a hospital or on an outpatient clinic or to a rural health center or to a barangay health station at the lowest unit, Madam Chair. Now, our network or our disease surveillance units and our disease surveillance officers, our hospitals, are oriented on the description of when can we consider this case as an MPAX, suspect MPAX case, because there is no laboratory yet. So based on the clinical presentation of the case, so the attending physician now or the health worker now confronting or managing or attending to the case because they are trained to this definition on when are we going to classify this as a suspect MPAX case. So this process now, if this will enter into this disease reporting units or we call it sensors or clinics or hospitals, so they can detect a suspect MPAX case now through our attending physician and our health workers.
So let's say, we have a clinic in Baguio.
Yes, sir.
That is, you know, probably initial evaluation, they suspect that this case is more of an MPAX. Then what will they do?
Okay.
Do they report to the, where? To the CTO department? Then from the CTO, it goes to the Regional Office of DOH?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, may I have a flowchart? That will show that one.
Okay, so we can also share the flowchart specific on MPAX because we have a guide.
Yes, Dr. Jurna, can you please show that?
Technical team, can you through the CVPMPAX just for us also to follow the process?
Please post the page. Yes, Rep. Solon.
While they're putting up the slide, so ma, 'yung sensor niyo will emanate from the barangay level or the LGU level, diba? Person ba yan?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Madam Chair. There are a lot of sensors based on the surveillance. It can go through a barangay health station or a rural health unit or a private clinic.
Okay.
So there are multiple sensors that can be captured by a disease surveillance unit and that's the Epidemiology and Surveillance Unit in terms of the flow.
When you say sensor, it's a physical thing?
At the moment, sir, yes, it's a physical thing. Although we have also use the blue dot and that we have a system that can also be our source through this technology. So we have physical and we have also use...
Jangan linalaga 'yan. Oh, you know, ma...
Yes, sir.
So you have a sensor. When you say sensor, it's a device that determines, for example, what kind of probably disease or what?
So round now...
Round now, sensor, physical ba yan? That's why I was asking.
Human sensors, human.
Ma'am, 'yun nagbanggit niyo kanina, Madam Chair. When I asked you what sensor was, you said, 'yun nagbanggit niyo health facilities.
Yes, Madam Chair.
So hindi siya tao, hindi siya BHW, hindi siya barangay nutrition scholar na nag-iinform sa... When you say sensor, you mean health facility like barangay health station or municipal hospital, ganun ba? Ano ba talaga 'yung sensor na?
Madam Chair, although we are sharing this terms that we use in the surveillance, but when we say sensors, these are the reporting units composed of an individual person trained to detect notifiable diseases.
So 'yung sensor niyo, I think you need to use a different word. Kasi sensor, for example, I came here, there is a sensor that will measure that one or two people entered. And when we lose, a sensor will tell us that the person left already.
Thank you for allowing us to clarify what sensor is in our parlang in the disease surveillance. So that's how we describe that this health facility can detect through our trained disease surveillance units team.
Okay, ma'am, so...
Yes, Rep. Solon.
Madam Chair, wala pa 'yung flowchart, kasi gusto ko din makita 'yung sabi ni Kong Go.
Chart. Oh, we have really a clear flowchart because by the time, Madam Chair, that WHO declared that as a public health of international concern, the Department of Health through the critical bureaus and concern bureaus really crafted a national action plan for the control and prevention of MPAX. And we have a clear process for this.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Dr. Jurna, now we have the flowchart. May we ask it to explain to us? So for now, as we heard earlier... Hindi ka ba't 'yung flowchart? Iba pa?
Specific for MPAX, we can have that specific for MPAX. But for the general classification of the disease classified as cat 1 and cat 2, this is the general process.
So as we understood earlier, Dr. Jurna, we heard you say that a sensor does not technically mean that it is a machine. It's more of a person who will be notified by a certain individual who is actually infected by that certain disease. For example, earlier on, we also requested for an exact, a specific sample from the MPAX. But soon after, Siguro, should we wait for that or we can go on? Maybe other resource persons can also have any more inputs while we wait for that sample. But technically, now we are cleared that the sensor does not technically have to be a machine. It's more of a person or an individual that we actually describe as the disease surveillance officer who will be the one to detect it. But later on, we will be asking for the clarification on this considering that we do have several barangays. I mean, that barangay, how do we actually train everybody to detect a specific disease? Diba? Kasi that would be, you know, we need to clarify. We have these officers available in all of our barangays, especially major, maka kumalat na 'yun by the time we understand what the disease is all about and how we quarantine a particular patient or individual who has that kind of disease. Minsan, di mo pa nga alam lang, not lang meron na palang disease. So we'd like to know, how do we exactly identify a particular disease, Dr. Jurna? Do we already have it or...
So can we just cite a very specific case? For example, there is a patient that went to a public hospital. Let's say, at the Baguio General Hospital. Para maano natin, maconceptualize natin, a patient feeling something that I do not... Yeah, febrile siya, pumunta sa doktor at hindi ma-diagnose ng doktor. Pumunta siya dun, hindi ma-diagnose. Binigay siya ng lab test muna, then they found out that there is something, mabulng na, MPAX. So premier, anong gagawin niya? Anong gagawin ng doktor? Ano pong gagawin niya under your... Yes, bibigyan ng gamot, syempre. Ano, orino per niya, meron consultant natatawagan para pagtulungan. Kasi hindi naman na-expert 'yung doktor. Okay, hindi niya alam kung ano 'yung sakit ng tao. Bakit meron siya mga signs that are gearing towards ito nga, identification as MPAX? 'Yun po 'yung mga doktor na pupuntahan, meron na silang ganung training, maka alam na nila. At kung meron, and saan pong lugar ito is this nationwide, you know, program, maka alam nila.
Yes, sir. Okay, opo. So, thank you, Madam Chair. Can I be allowed now to explain the process specifically as raised by Honorable Go? Let's have a specific area and disease, a case. So this is the management pathway or our referral guide for our network across the country. Now, in an example, if a patient consulted a certain hospital and then as mentioned by uh Honorable Go in Baguio General Hospital. Now, the point of entry could be at the emergency room or at the outpatient clinic. If the patient uh will have its entry at the E R or at the uh outpatient clinic. Uh so this will be the process. The attending physician shall screen the case. If what this uh case would be in terms of its assessment, uh what is the initial medical diagnosis of the case? Now, based on the guide, uh because we also really thoroughly oriented all our hospitals and all our uh uh primary care facilities, they also have the guide. So when are we going to say that this is a suspect M-PAX case? Now, if patient is classified as suspect or probable M-PAX case, there are also description and criteria when this patient can be classified as suspect or probable. Now, if the patient is classified based on the right uh uh side uh for me, on the left side, patient classified as suspect or probable M-PAX case. There is a standard case investigation form that should be filled up by the attending uh health worker notify immediately the local epidemiology and surveillance unit since M-PAX is classified as notifiable within twenty-four hours. Now, the patient should be referred for specimen collection for confirmatory. And right now, we are also have our R I T M has the capacity to confirm uh that uh for a case as M-PAX confirmed case uh using this uh technology and that's P C R testing.
So sa sa Madam Chair, uh para tuloy-tuloy to, let's say suspect 'yan. Meron pa tayong office sa B G O eight sa region, dun siya pupuntahan. Meron po kayo, alam na nila ngayon. Yung R I T 'yan kasi na sa Manila 'yan eh, oo. Pero sa, ilabas sa amin po sa car, sa Baguio. So if a doctor suspects that itong pasyente ito may M-PAX, uh pupunta siya ngayon sa isang opisina sa sa hindi po, sa 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 Baguio, meron din po 'yun. D O Hs.
Yes, Madam Chair. Uh uh to answer po the additional query of Honorable Go at the D O H uh Baguio, we have our regional epidemiology and surveillance unit. Now, in Baguio City, we also have our Baguio City Epidemiology and Surveillance Unit.
Okay.
And in the hospitals din po.
Pag uh nandun po, nandun 'yung epidemiolo- epidemiologists niyo sa sa Baguio, ito pong doctor na ito, uli uh, anong gagawin niya?
The the doctor in the B G is honorable, go, okay. The doctor or the attending physician in Baguio Gen will go through its process within the hospital since they also have their laboratory uh.
May di, what do you know, ma'am? Uh so you.
Have to collect specimen and then notify C S O at the Baguio to facilitate the transport of the specimen to R I T M.
Agalo 'yun, oo. Agalo 'yun, ilang.
Uh-uh. We have our R I T M, sir. They can also slide on the turnaround time.
Yes, we would like to, uh before, before we proceed, I'd like to recognize another member of the Committee on Health from the sixth district of Bulacan. We have Representative Salvador Pluta. Good morning, sir. Okay, so now we would like to recognize the um Attorney Anna Liza Duran, uh doctor from the Research Institute of Tropical Medicine. Director Anna, you are recognized.
Thank you po, uh thank you, Honorable Chair. Um the Research Institute for Tropical Medicine can do the P C R testing for monkeypox. During the M-PAX, um we already trained also uh sub-national laboratories. And Baguio General Hospital Medical Center is one of the uh trained hospitals where they can do the P C R testing. Other uh hospitals that were trained to do the M-PAX were Lang Center of the Philippines, San Lazaro Hospital, Southern Philippines Medical Center, Visonta Soto Medical Center, Western Visayas Medical Center, Biko- Biko South Luzon Subnational Reference Lab, Jose Bilingad Memorial General Hospital, and also East Avenue Medical Center.
So meron po kayo. Ngayon na, sinablik na, na-test na 'yung tao, confirm meron siyang M-PAX. Ano ba ang next process natin?
Uh if the patient is confirmed to have M-PAX, they will have to determine if the disease is mild or uncomplicated or complicated. But the infectious disease consultants who are assigned in the hospitals will know how to deal with the management of the cases. If the cases are only mild and uncomplicated, they will be sent home for i- home isolation.
Okay, so the uh we they can treat them right there and there, in other words?
Yes, po.
Okay, regardless of whether it's mild, uh ano pa, moderate, serious, severe.
Yes, po.
Ayat nung elektro.
Yes, po.
Okay, ayon. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Chairgo. Um is there any other uh member would like to continue on with the line of questioning with our R I T M director? Okay, so to proceed, no, may we also recognize other resource persons? May uh Attorney Anna Liza Duran, um would you like to continue on with your presentation considering that we already recognized you? Do you have a presentation for us?
Um, ma'am, we do not have a presentation. We will just be supporting other reports of the Epidemiology Bureau. Thank you, Honorable Chair.
Thank you so much, Director Ann. Uh may we now call on the Director Ferdinand Salcedo uh from the Bureau of Quarantine. You are recognized, doctor.
Uh good morning, Madam Chair. I'm representing Director Ferdinand Salcedo, Deputy Director Roberto Salcedo from the Bureau of Quarantine.
Yes, you may proceed. Do you have any uh?
Uh we uh we have most uh presentation, but we are supporting the presentation of the Epidemiology Bureau po. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Uh may we proceed and recognize uh our representative uh from the Food and Drug Administration. We have Attorney uh Emilio Berlin Junior. Director Emilio, may uh do you have any uh presentation? Yes, sir.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Likewise, we don't have uh any presentation insofar as related to the uh presentation of uh the uh our colleague from the D O H. Our our uh manifestation would be related to the bill uh 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 sponsored by by the good uh uh Congressman, madam. Uh Honorable Chairman, thank you.
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes, Chairgo.
We're going to do Bill of Congressman uh Gastambunting. Ah meron pa dalawa. Okay, okay.
Sige po, salamat, uh Chairgo. Uh may we also hear from uh Mr. Robert Lim, the Program Manager of the Department of Material Local Government of the Central Office of Disaster Information Coordinating Center. Do we have uh the Program Manager, Mr. Robert Robin Lim?
Yes, Madam Chair. Um uh insofar as for the presentation, we have no presentation, but we said we have a few some, we have few manifestation on the bill.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Lim.
Uh insofar.
Mamaya pa, for the for the bill pa kaya. All right, um do we have anyone else? Or do we have uh Mr. Regu Santiago, the Program Officer of the League of Cities of the Philippines? Do we have a presentation from your office?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Unfortunately, we do not yet have the presentation regarding the briefing of um uh regarding the Philippines' capacity for surveillance. However, I would like to manifest in support of um the D O H that local government units already have their epidemiology surveillance units. Um we have select cities as well who have turned these units into divisions already. So I think for local governments as well, we are ready to support whichever um amendments are needed to strengthen the E S U's in local governments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. So we are now going back to our Chairgo uh for your.
Yes, ma'am. Uh the Department of Health is uh capable to address uh based on what our doctor uh Manataga mentioned, uh any she- any any disease that will arise in the different parts of the country, we have a structured system where we can do the monitor, do surveillance, and account them real time. Uh tama po kayo, based on uh what you're saying. Pwede po ba nating uh siguro part of the other, if we can publish itong mga ganitong kasi like Baguio General Hospital meron pala, and that is catering uh saan? Only Baguio only caters to the coordinator or node Luzon, uh just like the other. Kasi ilang ilang na banggit kanila, mga a few of this. So probably, where do they go if something happens like this? Thank you.
Yes, doctor, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now, uh based on the law and based also on our monitoring capacity building and also based on the output now of the surveillance system, all local government units have their epidemiology and surveillance unit. Now, in terms of its capacity, uh this is where the dynamics are and the variations are. Uh but we have also the list of those uh full functional uh surveillance units. And we also have the list for those we need to upgrade uh local government epidemiology and surveillance units. So it's a progressive uh way of capacitating really our uh local government units as well as our hospital facilities.
Any follow-up, uh Chairgo?
Yes, Chair, um Rep Solon.
Maybe Chairgo had something or?
Uh you're telling us that there are more than one thousand uh municipalities in the whole country. There are about eighty-two provinces, more than hundred cities. All of this have uh epidemiologists about is a po, meron sila.
Uh Madam Chair, uh we can share you the list based on the functionality assessment and the special uh trainings and expertise that we have.
Ang sinubing talo, lahat po ito meron o ano, ano po 'yung mahal maninila at siguro.
We can uh share the number of local government units based on the assessment through our system. Uh we can provide and also the the current uh number of.
Ilan percento meron based on your assessment? Ilan percento?
Chair, Chairgo, um may maybe recognize Mr. Grudman of the D L G. I think he has some data and the numbers that we are um asking for.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Uh insofar as the functionality of the uh the local epidemiology and surveillance unit in the country. This is based from the recent assessment of the seal of good local governance. And our data actually stem from the Department of Health uh scorecard. Now, for the entire country, uh we are pegging at around sixty-four point thirty-seven percent of all local government units with functional local epidemiology and surveillance unit. Now, to break this down further, for the provinces, that's around eighty-three point ninety-five percent or sixty-eight provinces have functional uh lesu. For the cities, it's around eighty-five point twenty-three percent, around uh one hundred twenty-seven uh uh functional lesus. And for the seat, for the municipalities, we have sixty-one point twenty-one percent or nine hundred nine uh uh with functional lesus. We'll be providing the figures to the committee, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Lim. Um Chairgo, okay, na perul.
Uh thank you very much for the information. I think this will guide us in our uh proposed Bill of Congressman uh Gastambunting.
Thank thank you so much, Chairgo. Yes, uh Rep Solon, yes.
I just want to add, ma'am, uh you know, uh I think COVID would be the best example. Kaus nung na-nangyari 'yung COVID, nakita natin 'yung mga gap sa sistema natin. Tapos in the the last three years, you guys have strengthened it, and I I want to commend the D O H because very maganda na 'yung 'yung uh reporting system. And so I I just ask that you keep everything tight, right? Because I think, I I'll give you an example, maybe we have, let's say, monkeypox or chikungunya, let's say. They are infectious, but they're not as infectious as COVID, correct? So mahahabol niyo kung may sakit, pwede niyong i-isolate, so on and so forth. Nakikita ko may may problema dito sa reba is even if we have these lesus, uh sometimes they lack the kits to test on site. Tama? Because they have to send everything to our I T M. I'll give you example. One of someone in our household uh was suspected of getting chikungunya. So this is from mosquito, parang dengue ito. So ang nangyari is we could not test whether it was chikungunya or not because the hospital did not have test, no kits, right? No kits. Do you have it in our I T M? Because I know they say they they have to send it to Singapore or something to validate. Our I T M has it. So I think that's one gap that needs to be filled. If there is a infectious disease na madaling kumalat, dapat sa L G U mismo meron kayong available kits para ma-diagnose na dun. Monkeypox, makita mo may mga butoy-buto, diba? May mga physical, uh yeah. So maybe that's one thing that you might need to tighten is to capacitate the barangay and L G U level that they can diagnose on the spot and then isolate. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I I think that just like what happened uh sa COVID, ano, after a while before we were sending everything to our I T M, uh it takes long, but after a while when the kits were developed and introduced in the different parts of the country, real time, kahit na individual, they don't need to go to the doctor. They just, you know, test themselves and they can determine whether they have COVID or not. So I think we can do the same uh uh by capacitating them and providing them, of course, the the material uh compared to nating gawin 'yan, and that would require budget uh on the part of the Department of Health. And probably Phil Health can uh, you know, yeah, yeah.
Especially very infectious.
Yes.
Yes, um Director Anna Liza?
Um uh Madam Chair, if the disease is already known and there is already a gold standard for the diagnosis of the disease, then it will not be difficult for everyone to use the gold standard. However, for novel diseases that have not yet uh they have not yet discovered the gold standard for the diagnosis, and for example, they will still have to develop the kits. So that's the time that we have a problem, and it's not only nationwide but also global in um scenario whereby, for example, in COVID, they have to develop the kits. That's why there will only be like, for example, um a particular laboratory that can diagnose it at first because the kits are not yet distributed uh to the different areas. So after a while, when all the kits are able to, uh the all the kits were already developed and they were validated to really diagnose the particular disease, then the price of the kits and availability nationwide and globally becomes big or wide. So that at particular time, the the kits and uh will now be available anywhere else in the country and in the world. So that's that's what happens po. Thank you po.
Thank you, Attorney. Uh do we have any other questions regarding this um from the chair? Mag-ask lang san ako, uh Director Anna and uh Doctor Jena, uh whoever can respond to my question. Um knowing that we already have this kind of system, knowing now senior first officer to respond to an individual who is suspected of any disease, I'd like to know, how 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 quickly can we respond to a certain disease? For example, some of our hmm kasama natin mga tao minsan konting, oh konting sipon, wala na 'yun. They don't really want to talk about it. They just, some of them don't even cover anything. But how do, you know, if one is infectious? For example, sa kapana nila isipan, it's serious when they have the fever. Diba? Minsan kasi when you have fever, your body's already fighting it off. But then again, some of that. But then again, some of that, kailan ba nagiging infectious ang isang disease? Kung may fever lang, or during the time na nagbibigay na siyang symptoms, katulad ng ibo, and sipon or throat. It all comes to that point also for the butoy-buto, the, the spots that you see all over the body sometimes. Isipon na, hindi lang, ordinary says lang 'yan, cause I went through the whole thing. Wala akong kahit na in isang vaccination and growing up, and I went through the whole thing. And knowing, uh, some of them are actually, you know, communicable, so all seven of us siblings, kinukuha namin lahat ng sakit na 'yan, pero just because wala kaming vaccination. But we went through all that normally, pero, you know, the diseases coming from other countries, but, uh, the question was, how fast doing, how did we recognize and facts when it came from outside of the country? How fast was that? How, how long did it take for somebody to actually recognize that, considering na infectious na pala siya? And how do we tell everybody? Do we have, parang hindi kami nga tanakita dito sa e-tan flowchart, and how it was communicated for the rest of the country? So for example, that individual actually went to other provinces before he went home. And we don't even know, baka nasa katwan na pala niya, and then emitted throughout his fluids. So, uh, Doctor, uh, Jurna and, um, Director Analisa, how, how quickly do we respond to this? Especially then of course, it's normally coming out of, from a different country. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now, if the diseases is coming from other country, we also have the system to capture as much as possible as early as we can. Now, that's through the Bureau of Quarantine. And, uh, maybe, uh, Madam Chair, we can also ask, uh, B O Q as to the process.
And through Doctor Jurna, we, I recognize, uh, Doctor Salvador.
Uh, good morning uli, uh, Madam Chair. So the Bureau of Quarantine po has a intact, uh, system po in screening, uh, travelers from international community. So we also have our International Health Surveillance headed by our, uh, Division Head, Doctor Kaloy, wherein every day po, nagagather kami ng mga, uh, information, uh, from international sources like Blue Dat. So once we detect a cluster of cases na merong, uh, possible na makarating dito, so we alert, uh, our officers and, uh, Secretary of Health, kay so para po makagawa po ng, uh, regulation. Kay pero po, ang, ang Bureau of Quarantine po from, yeah, yeah, uh, since the start of SARS po, continuously po nagmo-monitor po, we have thermal scanners, secondary screeners. So once po na pumasok po ang travelers natin na meron pong, uh, fever or other, uh, physical signs and symptoms particular to a part, uh, to a disease, so now hold namin siya. And once po mahold namin, so ma-classify namin as suspect, so may refer po namin siya sa, uh, referral hospital natin like R I T M here in, uh, Manila po.
Thank you, Doctor. Yes, uh, Rep Salon?
So anyway, 'yung alam ko may thermal scanners ko sa airport, diba? Pero, eh, pag nabanggit mo, kung may mga signs and symptoms ang traveler, you are able to, to single them out and find them, pero tingin ko, that's not true. 'Yung fever, okay, kasi makikita mo sa scanner, pero kung may, ad, nakabryak ako, ang daming may ubo, ang daming may ano, no? Hindi natin ma-hohold 'yan. So I just need to know exactly, is it only the thermal scanner that you have, or do you have people on the plane informing you? At or seat number two, do may ubo at sipon, seat number, meron maganon or?
Uh, yeah, uh, yeah, yes, sir, uh, Madam Chair. Uh, meron po tayong, uh, tinatawag na health declaration checklist na naki-embedded na po dun sa e-travel system natin. So before, uh, traveler po, kay will enter the country, they are mandated po to fill up the health declaration checklist. Kay so siyempre po, limited din po 'yan, na dapat po truthful 'yung sasabihin ng traveler. So marami po talaga nagsisinongaling, kaya importante po will be the right information na binibigay natin sa traveler, especially po pag may, may, meron tayong nakikitang sakit sa particular country. Kasi po, because of the learnings po ng mga tao dito sa COVID po natin, so 'yung right information po will tell them how to protect themselves na matkaron at mauwi 'yung sakit dito po.
Madam Chair, can I, can I, I must follow you, cause I, I have to attend, uh, another committee, but I just like to throw this out to D O H or whoever, uh, what's your opinion on getting the population, uh, more responsible with a campaign? Na if you are sick or may ubo ka, just wear a mask or don't go, or something like that, kasi maganda na 'yung kampanya natin dati. Kung may larabang-bangka, kung maski-hindi COVID 'yan, may sore throat ka, magmaska, diba? I mean, how, how, how do you feel about that campaigns? Alam ko Chairman Go and Madam Chair, Japan and Korea, they do that, kung inuubo sila. Yeah, something like that ba? Cause I mean, that, that's, you know, tinatawag, we, we were using the buzzword during COVID when everyone was afraid, new normal, new normal. May wala ng COVID, balik sa dati, pero the new normal should be, diba? I've no, the, it should be like that, uh, Doc, diba? I think, uh, ako, I, I bring my mask. If I go to the elevator, I put my mask on. Yeah, so, anyway, yeah.
Thank you so much, Chair Rep Salon. Yes, Chair Go.
You know, uh, now that, uh, everybody's traveling, and dami nating nagta-travel left and right. Uh, after the COVID, everybody wants to travel. Siguro isa pang suggestion, in addition to what was suggested by Congressman Salon, is, uh, doing, ano, imonitor natin 'yung development of mga cases in other countries. So that when we, uh, inform our people, we can tell them exactly, or in Singapore or in Malaysia, these are the cases. Please, uh, avoid, you know, this kind of, uh, uh, you have to go do this, that in, in visiting these places. Kasi there are cases, uh, obtaining in these areas or in these countries, para alam ng mga traveler eh. Ang mga traveler, pag pumasok ka sa Pilipinas, your health declaration, isa pang trabaho 'yun eh, hindi naman nila ano 'yun eh. And we ask them to take responsibility for some of their health condition. And let's not put the burden to the country or to the government. 'Yung pag-aasi-kaso sa health ng tao, dapat sila muna, no? Protect themselves. Uh, pag ikaw ay nagta-travel, you want to travel, uh, you have to be sure that you are healthy. Wala kang, you prevent yourself from contaminating, uh, yourself also. Uh, 'yun, 'yun ang palagi ko, isasdapat nating gawin doon. We can have a highlight, warning, if you may, uh, sa lahat ng mga traveler, per visiting, uh, itong countries na ito, avoid, uh, in cloud or whatever. Uh, pwede ng advisory kung ganon. Para maiwasan naman natin 'yung, kasi pag pumasok na nga sa isang tao rito, doon, it contaminates other people. It will spread like fire, uh. Ilang, uh, Madam Chair?
Thank you, uh, Chair Go. Um, do you have a response to that, Doctor Jurna, yes?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, now with that, we also would like to share and, uh, uh, emphasize also the, the current system that we have. We have the Bureau of Quarantine. At the Epidemiology Bureau, we also have our International Health Regulation and External Unit, who also have the responsibility really to notify, uh, W H O I H R Secretariat on the diseases which have and public health international concerns. So, uh, these are the diseases that should be reported and to be shared, uh, outside the country. The same thing, other countries also are doing, report that to the W H O as I H R. And that case also will be shared across the member states. Example, if one case, uh, passed through our point of exit and the case was detected in Saudi Arabia, Arabia, example, now the I H R focal point for Saudi Arabia will notify the W H O and now will notify the Epidemiology Bureau of the Department of Health for further response, particularly contact tracing and other control measures. So that's also the system that we have right now, Honorable Chair.
Si, po, Doctor Jurna, thank you so much for that, um, do, maybe, um, okay, so we will now recognize first our, uh, another member of the hea-, uh, Committee on Health, Honorable Gastamputing of the Parinyake City Second District. Um, we will now proceed with our agenda, which is the deliberation on House Bill Number, uh, three eight six three entitled an Act Amending Republic Act Number one one three three two, otherwise known as the mandatory reporting of the notifiable diseases and health events of public health concern. The Chair would like again, once again, to recognize, uh, the author of the bill for his sponsorship. And thereafter, the Chair should also call our different resource persons to present their positions. And after this, the House members may also direct their questions to our guests. May I now recognize once again Representative Gustavo Tamputing?
Thank you very much, uh, Madam. Uh, amending the Republic Act one one three two, otherwise known as mandatory reporting of, uh, notified diseases and health events of public concern, um, act. Um, the COVID pandemic has allowed us for the early, uh, evaluation of the said law. The reading early asks for improvement in amendments. While some provisions are not yet fully implemented, the gaps in the current response show that the provisions of law would have been particularly helpful in controlling the spread of the diseases. The proposed measure, Madam Chair, uh, needs seeks to augment this law and to make more effective in addressing future outbreaks by establishing, uh, sub-national laboratories in all D O H one hospitals. Uh, we also seek to, um, establish hotlines and other forms of access corresponding to these diseases. And, uh, number three, requiring D O H to issue clear guidelines as soon as possible for the systematic reporting of these diseases. And four, requiring all public and private institutions to provide the necessary information campaign for the disease in surveillance and other, uh, epidemic, uh, investigations. Again, on behalf of the people of, uh, the Second District of, uh, Parinyake and, uh, and of course, for the good of the Filipino, I ask that the committee consider this, uh, proposed, uh, bill, uh, three one six, five one six three. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, uh, Rep, uh, Gastamputing. Uh, may we now, uh, have our resource person to respond to the House Bill, um, of, uh, Representative Tamputing on Republic Act, uh, amending the Republic Act Number one one three three two. May we first, uh, call on Doctor Jurna, Manataga, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now, uh, with this, uh, the Department of Health is, uh, su- supporting the amendment of the, the Republic Act one one three three two, and we will submit the official and approved position paper of the Department of Health. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Doctor Jurna. May we now call on the, the Director, Attorney, Analisa Duran of the I L P M to respond to the, to the bill?
Good morning, uh, Madam Chair. Likewise, the Research Institute for Tropical Medicine is also supporting the amendment of, uh, Act one one three three two by House Bill Number three eight six three, which is the mandatory reporting of notifiable diseases and health events of public health concern. As to the Research Institute for Tropical Medicine, we are the tech, um, we are the technological support of the Department of Health as to the diagnosis of all the diseases, the notifiable diseases of public health concern through our laboratory research division. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Director Anna. May we now call on the Food and Drug Administration, Representative Attorney Emilio Poli Junior?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, good morning once again to the, you know, the this honorable committee and to the, the other resource persons present. Uh, likewise, uh, insofar as, uh, this, uh, measure, uh, aims to further enhance our response strategy for, uh, epidemics or of, uh, national concerns or other local or national concerns, the Food and Drug Administration, in behalf of my principal, uh, fully supports the, the enactment of this, uh, bill, uh, Madam Chair. Uh, we will present our position paper, formal position paper, uh, but, uh, if we, we could be allowed to manifest our initial manifestations, uh, can, uh, I, I can, I can proceed, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, our, our observation deals on, uh, the amendment of Section seven of eleven three three two. Insofar as inserting, uh, the bo-, uh, the, the phrase or sentence in bold letters. Uh, number one, Madam Chair, uh, if I may read, uh, the Secretary of Health shall have the authority to declare epidemics of national and or interna-, and international concerns, in which case the inter-agency task force for the management of emerging infectious diseases created under Executive Order one six eight shall immediately convene. The President of the Republic of the Philippines shall have the authority to declare a state of public health emergency upon the recommendation of the I A T F or upon declaration of the W H O of a public health emergency of international concern. The state of public health emergency shall authorize the president to mobilize governmental and non-governmental agencies to respond to the threat and to exercise measures provided in R A U one oh one nine one, uh, two one when a state of calamity exists. Just the two points of initial observation, Madam Chair. Uh, the, the, if the provision states contemplates of two scenarios where it triggers the declaration of the president to declare a public health, uh, state of emergency. Number one is when the Secretary of, uh, Health declares epidemic of national and or international concerns. And number two is when the W H O declares a public health emergency of international concern. Uh, uh, we're not questioning the wisdom of the, the present, how it's presented, but probably if we could, you know, in most, in all likelihood, if W H O, considering that D O H is in close coordination with W H O, even prior to the declaration of the W H O of a public health emergency, maka, 'yung se-, 'yung, 'yung mismong secretary po ang magaano, kasi the, the, the message here is that if it is the secretary that declares a national, international concern, it will convene the I A T F. But if the W H O will declare a public health emergency, it seems na no more walang, walang engagement ang I A T F, though it's presented, I mean, how, how we read it. So most likely, baka kailangan, maybe a tweak lang. Uh, baka, 'yung declaration of W H O will, will form part as the trigger for the Secretary of Health to declare a, a public health emergency. In that way, the I A T F will now be convened. That's one observation, Madam Chair. And second is that the authority of the president to mobilize government, non-governmental agencies to respond to the threat, uh, referring to R A one oh one two one, which is the N, N D R R M C law. We would like to respectfully suggest as well to insert R A one one five one seven, R A one one five one seven, that is the authority of the president to streamline the, uh, regulatory processes or even suspend the requirements in cases of public health, uh, national emergency. And to add, to give more, uh, legroom, apart from R A one oh one two one and one one five one seven, we may suggest that include a phrase and such other laws as applicable. So that, uh, to, 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 uh, include other laws that may be enacted, uh, before, even before the enactment of this bill, Madam Chair. That's all, Madam Chair, uh, for now. Thank you.
Thank you so much, uh, Attorney. Um, before we proceed, uh, may I recognize first our, uh, another member of our Committee of Health? We have Honorable Bonifacio Bosita, uh, of the one. We have Honorable Bonifacio Bosita, uh, of the One Rider, or at least, good morning.
Good morning po.
Good morning po. Yes, Rep., uh, yes, Chairgo?
Yeah, I would like to clarify 'yung binigat ng ano natin, uh, resource person. Uh, you were saying that if this will be the triggering point is the declaration of the World Health Organization. Uh, do you have objection in that, that, uh, anyway, the World Health Organization declares it gawal dali naman eh? It's not specifically for a particular country?
No, no, uh, uh, it's, okay, we're not questioning the wisdom of it, Madam Chair, but the procedural aspect of it, since, uh, if the WHO declares it, the President can automatically uh, declare a state of public health emergency without even convening the IATF.
No, that will be addressed. The President will not just, uh...
That's right, that's right. That's why, that's why I said a while ago, Madam Chair, that most likely, kung may WHO declaration naman eh, nakaano naman talaga kaagad sa, sa Department of Health. So matre-trigger kaagad ang WHO, uh, naman, I mean, ang DOH din naman kaagad. Tas...
Di, uh, nakalagay naman dito, it's very clear that the President of the Republic shall have the authority to declare a state of public health emergency upon the recommendation of the AITF, EID, or upon the declaration. So, the President has all the option. And even if there is a declaration by the World Health Organization, the President may not declare a state of emergency, as he determines based on recommendation of the, uh, appropriate agencies, health agencies in the country.
Submit to the wisdom of the...
That is my support to our, uh, uh, proponent of this particular measure, Congressman Tambonting.
Thank you, thank you, Chairgo. Uh, before we proceed, Chair, you recognize Tambonting, another member of the Department of Health. We have Representative, uh, Honorable Joan Castro of the Second District of Cappies. Ma'am, good morning. Yes, Chair, you can proceed. Any further, uh, clarifications?
Yeah, I, I think I just want to clarify the statement indicated in Section Two, which is actually an amendment to Section Seven of Republic Act One One Three Three Two.
Yes, thank you so much, Chair. Uh, may we proceed to the other resource persons who might have, uh, also, uh, the manifestation regarding this bill, uh, from the Department of Budget and Management, where we will call on Ms. Ivette, um, Kong. Is she around? Uh, yes. Thank you. May proceed.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and to the honorable members of the House Committee on Health, as well as to all resource persons present today. Um, I am Ivette Maklangpo from the Budget and Information Legislative Service of the DDM. Madam Chair, while we are still studying the provisions of the proposed House Bill, the Department recognizes its intent to amend RA One One Three Three Two, notably including salient provisions such as the establishment of subnational laboratories in all DOH-run hospitals, DOH-run regional hospitals, and the establishment of epidemiology and surveillance units in the LGUs, as they seeks to enhance diagnostic and testing capabilities, ensuring timely detection and management of diseases. Additionally, this will also strengthen the government's capacity to monitor, investigate, and control public health threats effectively, especially in the local level. On the provision to establish subnational laboratories, may we kindly note that the position classification and organizational structure of this be subject to the review and evaluation of the DDM. And as for the management and operation of these, may we kindly defer pot to the DOH on the matter. As for the provisions to establish epidemiology and surveillance units in the LGUs, it is understood that this will be operated and supervised by the local government units concerned. In this regard, we would like to defer to the League of LGUs on the matter po. Um, that would be all for our initial comments, Madam Chair, and we will provide more insights po in our finalized position paper for the consideration po of the committee. Thank you very much po.
Thank you so much. Um, may we now call on and proceed to, um, Doctor, uh, may we call on Mr. Robin Lim once again from the Department of Interior and Local Government?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and, uh, to the honorable member of the committee. Uh, the Department welcomes this, this, uh, development on amending the, the, the previous, uh, the existing law. Uh, while we are still going through with the proposed amendments, uh, may we just want to highlight a few things? Uh, number one, we are in support that all local government units must establish their respective, uh, local epidemiology and surveillance unit with career positions, uh, with, with career positions of, uh, disease surveillance officers and other health-related professionals. Because we have learned this from the, from the pandemic, from the COVID-nineteen pandemic, that, that we lack these health professionals. And we actually mobilize, uh, several, uh, local functionaries to, to firm up the contact tracing operations. Uh, in addition to that, uh, Ma- Madam Chair, uh, I would just like to bring your attention to the proposed amendments, particularly on ITMI, that the DOH shall establish hotlines and other forms of access where the public can report notifiable diseases and health events of public health concern. Uh, it, it is just a humble suggestion to the committee that maybe want to consider uh, integrating such system of reporting these diseases to the existing hotline numbers of the local government units, so that, uh, all of the, all of the community can actually report it to, not just to the DOH hotlines, but to the existing hotlines that our local chief executives have actually established. That includes the, uh, nine-one-one. And with that, it is humbly suggested that the DOH shall create, uh, or develop guidelines, streamlining that integration process on how this, uh, reporting system through calls may be, um, enacted. Uh, with that, Madam Chair, and to the body, uh, the Department will submit its official, uh, position paper. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Lim. Um, do you have any, uh, clarification, or Chairgo?
Yeah, well, uh, this is not a clarification, but the concern of the ILG, as stated, uh, is already included in the letter I of, uh, the proposed amendment. At, as it says here, the DILG shall establish hotlines and other forms of access where the public can report notifiable diseases and health events of public health concern. So, and other forms of access. So that may put the rest of your concern, uh, if I may, uh, interpret the provision as indicated in this proposed, uh, House Bill Three Eight Six Three, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Chairgo. Would you like to respond, uh, Mr. Lim?
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Uh, the, the DILG respectfully submits to the guidance of the honorable, uh, Congressman. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, may we proceed to call on, um, Representative from, um, the League of Provinces of the Philippines, may we call on Ms. Angelica Sanchez, our Policy Development Director.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Uh, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Committee on Health. So, Madam Chair, the League of Provinces of the Philippines supports the amendment of RA One One Three Two. However, Madam Chair, we just have a cer- we just have certain points. We would also, with deference to our colleague from the DILG, we would like to take a different position regarding their proposition for a plantilla positions for the members of the local epidemiology surve- surveillance unit. Because firstly, Madam Chair, we have a provision in the local government code that, uh, limits the spending for personal services to forty-five to fifty-five percent. So, Madam Chair, unless there is such a position under the position classification of the DDM, we will have to, we will have to oppose any creation of a new position, especially if it mandates a, the creation of a new plantilla position. And then, secondly, Madam Chair, in terms of relative to Section Eight, uh, Section Three was for the amendment of RA One One Three Three Two, for the amendment of Section Eight of RA One One Three Three Two. May we request a provision there which provides that the DOH shall provide support through the HFEF for the procurement of, especially for the procurement of logistics and laboratory supplies, Mister, Madam Chair, because I think this is going to be one of the um, challenges to be faced by low, lower-income LGUs. Because aside from the personnel, they, they also have to equip the, the ESUS, the... So I think, uh, that we, we will be needing really the help of the DOH here. Maybe probably through the HFEF hospital facility, the, the, at least the HFEF program somewhere. It's in the bill that the DOH can help, because I think with the, uh, with the amendments, what is, ano here, is that the, the LGU ESUS will have to be independent from the DOH. So at least just a provision there, Madam Chair. So, thank you. That would be all. We shall be submitting our official position paper.
Thank you so much, um, ma'am. Uh, your, uh, your observation and comments are noted. Uh, may we now, uh, is there anyone else that I haven't mentioned and, uh, recognized?
The League of Cities, is Regis and Jack.
Ms. Regis and Lagu, the Program Officer from the League of Cities, do you have any position?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, the League does not yet have an official position on the matter. Hearing our esteemed resource persons and recognizing the vital role of local government units, um, in, uh, alongside the DOH as its first line of defense on epidemics and health events, I will be sure to elevate the matter to our principles and seek their support on this House bill. Additionally, I would just like to support the previous manifestations of the esteemed, um, Representative Solonengo, that local governments provide a critical role in quickly diagnosing or testing these potential diseases. Uh, the proposed amendments to Section Six of, uh, Number Six in the House Bill encourages LGs to establish their own laboratories and partners, uh, partner with private hospitals. We hope for the ample support, uh, from the DOH and the RITM, the capacitation and establishment of these laboratories specifically. Because these, uh, uh, on the note, the funding for these laboratories will be, um, quite large, especially for, for lower-income local governments. So, that's something that we would like to keep an eye on, hope for the support of the DOH on the matter. Similarly, um, we also express support to the position of the LPP that we might have to, um, oppose, uh, regarding the, the manifestation of the DILG in creation of new plantilla positions, um, with the, uh, for ESUs. Um, just, uh, so to support the, the manifestation of the provisions for the personnel cap. Um, that would be all, Madam Chair, with you.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, may I, may I propose in response to the comment of the, uh, the ILG and the League of, uh, Cities and Municipalities, because it says here all provinces, cities, and according to the data submitted to the ILG, only about sixty-four percent have this, uh, uh, epidemiology and surveillance unit, no? So I would propose that in, uh, clustered or in areas where there's there are small municipalities, they can cluster themselves and have one only per one or two or three or more, uh, ESU or ESUS in these areas. So instead of putting all, barang di kaoyan, uh, pwedeng tanggalin ay waw na all, and we'll do, uh, an amendment to this, uh, amendment, uh, proposal, so that we can address the issue raised earlier, but, uh, because small cities might not be able to fund this, uh, ESU, no? And at the same time, uh, because of the limit on the forty-five percent as mandated by law, uh, they might have been able to put up, uh, you know, plantilla positions for this. Uh, I'm sure our, uh, proponent will be amenable to that.
Thank you, Chairgo. Uh, to proceed, uh, may I also call on our representative from the Philippine Statistics Authority? May we call Attorney Jefferson Duado, may I recognize?
Good morning, Madam Chair, and to the honorable members of the committee. Uh, the Philippine Statistics Authority is, uh, the major agency in charge in the collection and processing of, uh, statistics, uh, fully supports the passage of the bill, uh, amending RA One One Three Three Two. Uh, as far as, uh, sec- uh, as the fourth, as far as the fourth objective is concerned, uh, which requires all public and private institutions to provide the necessary information in disease surveillance and other epidemiologic investigations, uh, the Philippine Statistics Authority, uh, and this objective is within the scope and functions of the Philippine Statistics Authority, Madam Chair. I will, we will submit our official position paper. Thank you.
Thank you so, so much, Attorney Duado. May we now call on Ms. again, Attorney Analizaduran to have a further, um, discussion on the seven.
Uh, thank you, ma'am, uh, Madam Chair. Uh, we were just like, uh, looking into one section, and, uh, we will be providing, um, our specific recommendations po after the hearing today. Thank you po. Section.
What is the question? Yeah, uh, section.
Section Three, uh, under, uh, Section Eight. Section Eight of Republic.
Yeah, all provinces, cities, and municipalities.
Yes, po.
Hmm.
Uh, regarding the word all, so we will be discussing this on the level of the Department of Health regarding the provision of the trained required human resource complement. Uh, which state, uh, here it states all provinces, cities, and municipalities should establish their ESUS, which shall closely coordinate with the ESUS of the Department of Health. So, uh, going back to the Department of Health after this hearing, we have to, uh, assess the ability to establish all of this in all provinces, cities, and municipalities. And we will therefore give the recommendation, uh, after. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Attorney. Yes, Chairgo.
Madam Chair, the suggestion I made earlier is, we will need the word all, because the suggestion I made earlier, there might be some municipalities that are close with each other. Instead of having one ESU per, uh, municipality, they can have, uh, several municipalities with one ESU. So that's the suggestion to address the concern raised, uh, not only by, uh, uh, the Department of Health, but also by, uh, the different municipalities and cities, as well as DILG as an entity. So, if, uh, that would answer the concern, uh, uh...
Thank you so much, Chairgo. Um, yes, Dr. Jurna, Department of Health?
Madam Chair, um, in relation to the, uh, number and percentage of local government units as to their functionality, uh, based on the, uh, current data as of twenty-twenty-four, that we will also be submitting officially to, uh, DILG. We have seen a significant improvement from twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four. Now, our initial data now is we have at around seventy-nine point eight percent. So we hope that we could sustain that and even, uh, improve to a higher as since, uh, looking into the, the need of the law of notifiable diseases based on the emerging diseases that we have and based also on the burden of the disease that we have, uh, based on CAT one and CAT two. There's really a need, Madam Chair, to assist and fully support all the local government unit, so they will be able to really function even at the first line of defense to detect and notify. So we will be submitting officially through the ILG, the seal of, uh... So, we will be submitting officially through the ILG, the seal of, uh, lu- local good governance uh, as the result of our validation. So, we are now at seventy-nine point eight percent from twenty-twenty-three that we are now at sixty. So, that's the progress, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Dr. Jurna. Does this, uh...
Yeah, uh, therefore, I would suggest that the ILG and, uh, uh, the, the O should reconcile their numbers, because the ILG is saying sixty-four point seven percent, while the O rates, uh, says it's seventy-nine percent. So, but still, uh, you know.
Yes, um, thank you, Chair Go, the ILG and, uh, DOH. Maybe you could, uh, uh, reconcile, uh, your statistics, your numbers, so we can, uh, have the exact, uh, numbers that we need and, uh, um, before I move to the next, uh, resource person, uh, bottom line, ano, um, we cannot discount the fact that most of the diseases that are in our country actually came from outside of the country. Diba? It will not be here if it did not go in of the country. So, definitely, uh, it is very crucial that the detection also should be, uh, con- concentrated merely from the Department of Quarantine, from the Bureau of the Quarantine. Diba? Detection there is early on, makikita mo na kung... I think, uh, we need, uh, is this for, uh, better technology? Because, uh, more often than not, they pass through our quarantine, eh? Sabi natin na hindi natin nadidetect 'yung fever immediately. How, how is this? Na, o, o, na ba dapat si, uh, ITM, si DOH, sasabihan niya si DOQ? Uh, quarantine muna, may pumasok dahil dito si... Who gets the information first? From your end and your, your departments, do you inform the, uh, the Bureau of Quarantine to watch out for incoming diseases that will be coming from the other countries? Definitely, diba? World Health, diba? Mangkagalingan, and then DOH will get the information. DOH do you have, uh, the people who will be informing our Bureau of Quarantine to watch out for people manifesting all these symptoms? Bureau of Quarantine, may I recognize once again Dr. Roberto Salvador to, uh, respond to this? Thank you so much.
Yeah, good morning again, Madam Chair and honorable members of this committee. So, the Bureau of Quarantine mandate po is to protect the country against this international hea- health threats po. So, we have our own system po of detecting and survey, uh, surveillance po, our international health surveillance po. So, sabi ko nga po kayo na every day, uh, uh, gumakuha po kumain ng data internationally. So, uh, pag meron kami, nakuha ng mga data na, uh, pwede maging threat dito sa country, pwede pumasok. We inform the DOH po through secretary, and we advise our, uh, our airports and ports po to be vigilant with this kind of diseases po. So, continuously po talaga po ang Bureau of Quarantine po, ang first lines, first line of defense against this international health threats po.
Yes, uh, doctor, um, doctor, na si Dr. Salvador? Uh, anyway, uh, your position on the, regarding the bill, may we have it for our author?
Yes, po. Uh, thank you po. The Republic Act one-one-three-three-two, or mandatory reporting of notifiable, notifiable diseases have, have, has been an important instrument in our fight against COVID-19 pandemic. It was used by the Bureau together with RA ninety-two-seventy-one, or Quarantine Act of twen- two thousand four, to ensure control measures conducted at our national borders are legal, protective of the common goods, and respective of individual rights. So, we fully support po the, uh, amendment of RA one-one-three-three-two. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Dr. Salvador. Yes, may we recognize Representative, uh, Castro. Castro to give her, um, comments, yeah.
Yes. Uh, yeah, we have heard the, uh, suggestion from, uh, the League of the Provinces, Ms. Angelica uh, Sanchez, uh, regarding the, uh, requiring the DOH to supply the, uh, required machines or equipments, because we can hardly, of course, rely on our municipalities to, uh, um, provide that. And of course, it is DOH which is, uh, more knowledgeable on this equipment. So, uh, can we add that, uh, in this provision, that to require the DOH to at least supply the required equipments and machines?
Dr. Jurna, would you like to respond to her, uh, query?
With regards to the laboratory, uh, supplies, as well as those, uh, expressed early, Madam Chair, um, as, as part of the process in terms of... Ma'am, I'm asking for the equipments and machineries. The laboratory supplies, it's manageable, I think, but the equipments and machines. Uh, Honorable Chair, Madam Chair, we will, uh, take note of this, uh, additional, uh, provision of the amendment, and we will discuss this, ma'am, uh, with the Departments of Health.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Um, Rep. Castro, do you have any follow-up, uh, queries for our, uh, resource persons? What Lana po?
No, it's, uh, my question will be under Section Four na.
Yes, po. You, you may, uh, proceed.
Okay, okay.
Yes, Rep.
So, start. We have in Section, Section Four, um, we have, uh, under Section Nine prohibited acts. All this, uh, is, I, I, I I think there's no penalty that, uh, will deter or prevent or reduce this prohibited acts or, uh, annoying acts, no, from happening. Uh, any suggestion as to the penalty that should be included here in this provision?
Um, may we ask the author, uh, for your comments on her question?
Oh, sorry.
But... A penalty for this...
Uh, Section Nine prohibited act.
That's to reduce, prevent, or, um, prevent?
I definitely, uh, would be more than ready to agree to the penalty as long as, uh, uh, it is, uh, within the legal framework. Um, we should also take in consideration the existing law. Kusampu, does it provide a penalty? So, uh, then...
Yes, um, Rep. Tamun Ting, you have it in Section Ten. Uh, Rep. Castro, uh, the penalties are indicated in Section Ten.
In this paper that is so, it hardly cannot read it here, is it here?
Ma'am? May, may, Madam Chair? Madam Chair?
Yeah, the Honorable Marco.
Yeah, uh, it's, it's actually in Section Ten of Republica one-one-three-three-two. Uh, and the amendment does not propose any changing the penalty. Yes, so, so automatic it of, um...
That's the reason why I asked.
Yeah.
There's a reason it exists.
Yes.
Official. Then, uh, there's no need for me to include one in my proposed bill. Thank you.
Righto, ma'am. Under Section Ten, penalty is, uh, any person or entity under a violated Section Nine of this act shall be penalized with a fine of not less than twenty thousand pesos, but not more than fifty thousand pesos, or imprisonment of not less than one month, but not more than six months, or such, both such fine and imprisonment at the discretion of the proper court. And po yon. Because this is, was an amendment to the, uh, second provision, yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
See the screen, huh? Yon.
Okay.
Uh, okay, uh, Madam, Madam Chair, if there are no more, uh, concerns, issues, and manifestations on this proposed, uh, Bill three-eight-six-three, I would like to move that we approve, uh, House Bill three-eight-six-three, an act amending Republica one-one-three-three-two, otherwise known as the mandatory reporting of notifiable diseases and health events of public health concern, subject to style and amendments. Three-eight-six-three.
Three-eight-six-three.
There being, uh, a motion, thank, uh, there being a motion duly seconded for the approval of House Bill number three-eight-six-three, uh, how about its committee reports? Who are subject to style and amendments, including its committee more reports? House Bill number three-eight-six-three is approved.
Madam Chair, I would also like to be made a co-author with the final actions of the author, Representative Gastamting.
Thank you very much, uh, Madam Chair, of course, and I may request that all members present in today's, uh, hearing be included as, uh, uh, proponents of this measure. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, there being a motion on, uh, that, and that, uh, for all our members present here this, in this hearing, uh, be made co-authors of the said bill, uh, duly seconded, that motion is also approved.
May I, Slamat po, Madam Chair.
Uh, there being no other matters, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to adjourn.
This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you so much for everyone.